I'm not, I'm not on this committee.
You're not on this committee, Chris, that's right.
Yes. I thought it was you, who's on this committee, you?
You, me, and Jill.
I apologize, Jill.
That's okay.
I'm just, just over here.
I, yes, do we, we don't have to move anything, it's just approval, right?
We approve, yeah.
Yeah.
I wasn't here on the first slide.
We usually just go right, yeah.
Yeah. Does any, any questions or concerns about the minutes from?
No.
No, I read.
I think they're fine.
So, one question, usually will volunteer someone to be a chairperson, is there anyone interested in being the chairperson for HR this?
Right.
Could I, I don't know how long you've been on HR, Chris?
Long time.
Ten years minimum.
You, ten, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we were on the front, so, so eleven.
Yes. Well, I think that's fifty years.
And you were in. Did you skip a year? Okay.
I.
So, I'm, I'm assuming though, you're chair of finance again?
That was gonna be my other question.
We have.
Oh, they haven't yet?
We haven't.
Volunteered told you?
No, I haven't been volunteering yet.
I don't think you didn't have everybody at finance, uh.
You didn't, no, so we had, we, we moved it.
Uh. Right, so.
And how long have you been on HR?
I've been on HR, I, for six or seven years, six or seven, six or seven.
I wouldn't say, okay. Does e- does either one of you wanna beg us not to have you be the chair of the?
I'm, I'm willing to do it again.
You're willing?
And if you're willing to do finance.
So, okay, or should we begin? Good.
Okay.
Yes.
In that case, I move that or I may, um, elected to a chair of this committee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
The approvals are done.
All right.
There.
Okay, and so now, um, the next item of business is the discussion. Discussion of health insurance for Medicare eligible retirees, and we have Christina Braga from BNB here, and we have Bob Van Kuren from ICSD here. And, um, did you see the documents that I forwarded from Christina with a comparison chart and, and answers to questions that we had posed?
I, I found those extremely helpful, but did not answer everything, of course,
As did I.
which I'm hoping more of will get answered during our big meeting with public and, uh, the other folks here.
Uh-huh.
So, but yeah, this is, this is great, thank you.
And I apologize, I have a second version that came today, as I was reading through, I realized when I PDFed it, it cut off a few sentences, so it's version two of that board question.
So, probably answers those questions.
So, good, maybe it was just cut off, so that is possible. But like Moira said, my name is Christina Braga, it's nice to see some of you again, and it's nice to meet some of you for the first time. You used to have to deal with me like every other month or so I'd come down here, but with COVID, it's been a while, so I wanted to pop down and see everybody and make sure, most importantly, that I can answer all of your questions. I, and Bob as well, you've been spending a lot, a lot of time on the very intricate details about the plan, worked with your retirees for months and months and months, so, um, my goal is to leave here today with you understanding the plan, kind of understanding the questions, and if there's any takeaways for whatever reason I don't know, I'm happy to get the answer and get back to everyone. Okay, does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
All right, um, so do we want to start with, um, so everyone got this document, right? So this is a comparison between the Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield document and the Aetna MAPD, which is the Medicare plan, okay? Um, Moira pointed out, so I want to clarify, you're gonna notice on the Exelis side, it'll say one hundred percent, but under the Aetna side, it'll say zero dollar copay. They mean the same thing, but the reason the language is different is because on the Exelis side, you have a deductible and coinsurance after, so it's not a copay. You have, uh, two different mechanisms working within the plan, so if it's one hundred percent covered, that's the coinsurance. On the Aetna plan, since there's no deductible, they relay that as a zero dollar copay, so that's what your members would see, is that zero dollar copay, okay? On the Aetna plan, you're going to see certain enhancements, you'll see there's an eyewear allowance, there's hearing aid allowance, there are some enhancements on things like chiropractic that don't exist under Exelis plan. Also, there were, um, certain services, uh, like pap smear, um, is typically one every three years, you have an enhancement to do every, uh, year, uh, based on feedback from retirees. So the Aetna plan has enhancements based on feedback that we received over the years and trying to address, uh, member issues. Uh, if you go down to the bottom, uh, we can just get right down to the last page, I would say, um, all the benefits are really listed there. So here, this is where, um, we talk about the prior authorization, which is where a lot of our questions have come in. So prior authorization on your Exelis plan does not apply, however, medical necessity reviews do apply, and I think sometimes that piece is forgotten. So medical necessity is what every carrier has, it's a policy that determines what services get paid for, and every carrier has that, because otherwise it would be a free-for-all of getting services done, right? So with Exelis, that happens retrospectively. So if I go to PT a few times, and then maybe my third or fourth visit, the insurance might bill me because they realize it's not medically necessary. I would be responsible for that bill because of the medical policy. On the Aetna side, prior authorization applies to the more costly services, so not to all services, but the more costly services. And the reason they do that is because even though they have the same medical policy, which is almost identical to Exelis', the prior authorization process lets a retiree know in advance if there could be any issues with the bill. So that way, there's no surprise bill after a service. So they need, um, a piece of equipment, if it's not approved, they'll know before they get it, they can work out the details. Most of the time, the doctor just needs to submit the proper paperwork, and we don't have an issue. So that is really the difference there and where a lot of our questions are. Um, one thing I did know in here, um, because we have been hearing about PT and OT a lot, there are no prior authorizations on PT. So there's just the medical necessity policy, just like what you have with Exelis'. So someone could go, but then after so many visits, they check up against their med policy. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. So then, under the prescription drug coverage, based on your bargaining contracts, you have different prescription copays, so we have different plans that have to be offered. What we have put, uh, on the left-hand side, those are the premium equivalents for those Exelis plans. So basically, based on the cost, that's what we have to budget. And on the right-hand side, those are the Aetna premiums that the district would pay. So you can see the drastic difference. Um, another drastic difference is that everyone under the Aetna plan is a single. So if it's myself and my spouse, we're both singles, or belly buttons we like to call them. Under the Exelis plan, if I'm a husband and wife, family, you're gonna notice is more than two times. There's a family factor, because your Exelis plan has families built in. So retirees that are over sixty-five would be paying on a higher factor, whatever percentage they have. So ten percent of a higher number, as opposed to ten percent of two singles, does that make sense?
I wanna clarify for me one more time, for the folks listening at home. Say it one more time.
Sure.
It's a bit of a soundbite.
Yep, so on the Exelis side, if you are a family, that could be just a husband and a wife.
Right.
But it's not the single rate times two, it's usually times two point seven.
Wow.
So because you're accounting for all the families that have multiple children, it's what we call a family factor. So that's what's built into the Exelis plan rate.
Exelis plan. So it's a, it's a multiple rather than a group, so you, I got you.
Yep, so I'm one family contract, but I could have five people in my family. The rate is based off of a family factor, which is times two point seven, okay?
That's a difference, that's a big one for us to note.
Yep, so if I'm a retiree and it's me and my husband, I am paying off of two single rates, so not only is the rate much lower, and then it takes out the family factor on top of that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay. So you can see here, if we're just talking about premium equivalents, you can see without even factoring in the additional family factor, um, the budget, if all of the post-sixty-five retirees were in the Exelis plan, would be about eight point nine million, and the Aetna plan, uh, based on paid premiums, about three point seven million. So that's just budgeted rate against the fully insured premium. So the next question that I always get, and we've gotten so many times, was, well, it's too good to be true, how can this be possible that this plan is that much better for the district? And the reason is because you are under a thousand enrolled in the medical, you are considered community rated, which means they cannot use your experience against you. And historically, in the post-sixty-five population, the Ithaca retirees have had very, very high claims experience. So the fact that this is a community-rated product means that they don't look at that, they don't take that into account, they give you the rate based on tens and hundreds of thousands of retirees in their community pool. So that's really the biggest advantage that we have being in this product. In addition, because this product has an actual Part D as in dog for the prescription, Aetna also gets back government subsidies, so they're able to tap into a federal reinsurance, which is like, almost like a stop-loss from the government. They're able to tap into additional manufacturer money, and that also helps them keep the premiums down so they can offer it to us at a reasonable rate. Does that all make sense?
As much as it's going to, I think.
I know, it's a, it's a lot, so please ask questions.
I, I just feel like I've been so immersed in this for so long, and I just feel like I'm really starting to get a handle on it after all this time and be able to hold on to it. Like, I, I would learn things, I'd ask questions, and then I would lose my understanding. So after a really long time, I feel like I'm just beginning to really be able to have it solidly.
Christina, what, um, when you look at these two plans, just, are there, are there areas where you think Exelis does, or no, where Aetna does not match Exelis?
The only area.
Because they look, I, I'm just saying, because my sort of simple look at this, they're, they seem equivalent, which is, I suppose, what we're looking for, equivalent for.
Or better, better.
Or better, yes.
Right, and yep, and so this type of comparison was what was presented to the committees and everybody beforehand, just to.
Better is a lot.
I vaguely remember this, yeah.
Yeah, just to try to do a deep dive, to get all the questions answered. But the only area really, um, that we found on benefit lines is orthotics. Exelis, because Medicare doesn't cover orthotics, Exelis had an orthotic benefit. So what happens is today, when, uh, someone has orthotics, that goes through the appeal process that we've been talking about. So the retiree reaches out to us, we get their documentation, and we get them reimbursed through the district. Effective January first, though, Aetna will have a rider for those orthotics, so those folks won't even need to go through that process. And at that point, I would say, I'm not aware of a benefit that would be equivalent or better to the Exelis plan.
And I would say, so, um, you know, all along from the beginning, we have said when, um, when we went to the Hartford and then to Aetna, that if there are unforeseen gaps, where something would have been covered by Exelis and is not being covered by Aetna, the district will reimburse. Uh, I think the question is that, um, has that process of people being able to find out whether something that's been denied would have been covered at, at, by Exelis, is the process of discovering the, the facts and then getting the actual reimbursement, is that working?
So from our perspective, if they reach out to our office, really if they give us the information, we have to do a lot of the like word from there. So we then do a test claim with Exelis, we run their exact CPT and diagnosis code to say, okay, uh, John Smith is on this plan, would this have been covered based on these circumstances? And aside from the orthotics, really the answer's then typically no, or it's experimental. So in that case, what we do is we go back to the retiree with a policy and say, here's the policy that details it with Exelis, so unfortunately, based on what he gave us, this would not be covered under the Exelis, which means unfortunately, it won't be reimbursed through the Aetna plan either. Um, we did have, after the letter went out, we had many people call us, um, about old situations we had worked on, thinking maybe something had changed, so we looked at it with a fresh set of eyes, just in case. And in every one of the cases, still the answer unfortunately was, they were not eligible for reimbursement.
Go ahead.
Just, uh, a point of, uh, clarification too, the rate of denials for the Medicare is substantially less than the rate of denials for Exelis Blue Cross.
The rate for Aetna is significantly less.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. You said Medicare.
Yeah, the Medicare product.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm new to this, but soon I'll be on one of these plans too. Um, so what I'm seeing with the cost comparisons are that there's, there's no place that Exelis pays more than Aetna except for orthotics, but there are many places where people would have to pay out of pocket for services that are covered by Aetna. And when you talked about, um, mammographic pap smear, prostate cancer, some, um, some of these, is there's a, is there a difference in the frequency with, which is covered by Blue Cross and Aetna that it's covered more frequent, more frequ- frequently, I hate to, by Aetna?
Actually, um, typically it would be less frequently, so we had to add in riders to increase the frequency, because Exelis changes their recommendations based on the data at the time. So again, the pap smear is a perfect example, right now it's once every three years if nothing is detected. Certain retirees wanted to go every year, that's just what they felt comfortable with. Under Exelis, that would not be covered unless there's a reason. But under the Aetna plan, we had a rider added, so that's actually an enhancement over the Exelis plan, for instance.
And the, and the, um, the rate of, um, denials, which was on this spreadsheet that Moira sent around a while ago, I found the most compelling of all the documents that basically Exelis is denying three times the number of claims per person as Aetna.
Yes, and I honestly was in disbelief, I asked four different times and four different people, because I just, like, this can't be wrong, somebody needs to make sure you're checking this. And he said, no, we're telling you, this is the rate of denial. And I know people like to think Exelis is perfect, well, not the people that are having problems with Exelis, but if you don't have Exelis, you might think it's perfect, but we have just as many calls with retirees on Exelis plans today, they can't get their diabetic medication, they can't get whatever they need, it's, it's not a perfect solution, um, like some people may think.
Oh, something that came up to you the other day, um, is it possible, this is what I, that some of the people who are having problems on Aetna, that the pro- like, for instance, being told that they can't be accepted as a patient, um, by a particular doctor, is it Medicare that's the problem and that they're having problems because, not because they're on Aetna, but because they're now on Medicare where previously they didn't have that issue?
It's possible, but also we're running into a lot of practices that just aren't accepting new patients.
New, right.
So we're, we're getting calls, the Aetna plan, you know, is keeping me from going to ABC, and we call the provider and they're like, we're not taking anybody.
Yeah.
So there's just.
And I do know some doctors take, are taking new Medicare patients.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that, and that when people have been told that, they had misunderstood and thought it was because of Aetna.
Right.
And it, it isn't Aetna.
Right. Right, so no matter what arrangement you're on, whether it was backed with Exelis or not, folks would still, in that scenario, run into an issue where they wouldn't be able to see that provider.
So, crazy question, um, with the number of, um, retirees that had issues, how many are, have, still have outstanding issues that have not been addressed or rectified, that we know of? I, I.
I guess it depends on what you mean by rectified. Because in our mind, if we provide the medical policy and, you know, clear instructions, you know, this order wouldn't be reimbursed, in our minds, unfortunately, it's closed, but in the retiree's mind, they might look at it as.
Yeah, still, yeah. So, and, and what they're also looking at is either coverage or reimbursement, correct? So, there, from what I understand and looking at this, it's not a large out, large amount of outstanding, um, lack of coverage or reimbursement, correct?
Correct.
So, rough, rough numbers.
Oh, let's see, active issues right now that we're finishing up, probably twelve, including the orthotics claims, we have a lot of orthotics claims right now, and those are gonna get reimbursed, just a matter of getting right deeper trail. So yeah, I would say probably dozen.
So we're now insuring approximately how many folks?
Eight to forty-one.
Um, eight hundred and forty, uh, belly buttons on the Aetna side of things.
Eight forty.
So that includes spouses, yes, sorry, belly buttons is just our lingo.
The two big, um, complaints about Aetna that I recall was, one was someone being reduced physical therapy or cut off from physical therapy.
And, and the frequency of physical therapy, you could only get X amount corrected, I remember in that.
Yeah. Frequency of physical, so, but it was all around the same person, and then there, there was someone who wanted to go to a particular Mayo pain clinic.
Mm-hmm.
But there was also another reason why they, that Aetna, why they couldn't get into that, as I recall.
Yes. That's correct, so yeah, the pain clinic situation, um, they, uh, were at a spot during COVID where they weren't taking the Aetna plan, the Medicare hopes. When we called though, you had to, you had to, um, be referred by their primary care, and they weren't accepting new patients. So in that case, the member had to go someplace else, it wasn't an option. So, um, that was the situation, and then as far as the frequency on PT, um, I think the situation you're talking about, what we discovered is that they had a new biller in the PT office, and you have to request the visits as you go with a plan of care. If you don't submit a plan of care, they're not going to give you more visits. So once we, it was a long haul, but once we figured out that was the issue and educated the brand-new biller, that hasn't been an issue since that I'm aware of, as far as getting visits, like visits at a time.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Can I just ask a question just about the number of people on Aetna? Because I'm looking at the comparison chart, and it's divided into three different categories, and it's two sixty-five, four eighty-two, and two, and that, by doing the math, is seven hundred and forty-nine belly buttons.
Okay, I could be thinking of your latest numbers, this is probably as of the marketing time.
Oh, okay, all right.
But would, the outcome should be the same for both, so if you add it to both, it would go up.
Right. Right, exactly, okay. So in fact, with more people, it would be even more costly.
So it'd be even worse, right. Right.
The numbers would both go up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One of the other things the committee might present is there's a federal report, um.
Oh, yes.
That really, at, at least on the surface, maybe in depth a little bit, seemed to attack Medicare Advantage plans as being, uh, ripe for wastegradings. Now, if you read down in further, there's some details that, you know, first, the Russian is not as bad as, as what I think. And secondly, I don't think it really targeted Aetna or, um, culpability with Aetna to any degree, except. Um, but you're gonna hear about that report, pretty sure at the full court meeting.
And Christina, didn't you make the, the, uh, the, give us the information that some of the, um, issues with Medicare Advantage are with individual plans rather than our customized group plan?
That's correct, yeah, a lot of the articles that we were seeing from like the watchdog group were complaints about Medicare Advantage, they were individuals. So on the individual side, there is a donut hole, which means you have a gap in your prescription coverage. Um, there are sometimes referrals needed, there are a lot of little intricate things that folks can't control on the individual market, but they need a Medicare product. This is a custom group program, so, um, one of the members had asked if there was a star rating on this plan, and there's not even a star rating because it's custom, nothing else exists like your plan. Um, there are star ratings on the individual plans because those are off the shelf, uh, and that's what they sell to people.
That's the one where Jo Namath wants you to call the full number.
That's right, and for zero dollars.
Or Julie Walker.
Well, I, I know, and those are, those are so annoying because they make people believe that you can have the world for nothing.
Yes. Yes.
And it's baloney.
And we actually have a Medicare expert in-house that deals just with individuals who said, hey, I saw Jo Namath, and can you give me that plan, and she was, wait a minute, I need to see what you really need. Because if you go with Jo Namath, you're gonna have a big bill if you have a prescription, right? So she'll actually sit down with someone and analyze what they need, um, because yes, it's so confusing, and there's so much information being thrown at retirees, as soon as you turn sixty-five, your mailbox is full. So, um, I know part of, you know, the issues that we're having has been, you know, a little bit of misinformation or some, they heard from a friend that this is what happens with Medicare, and so when they come to the source, usually we can answer it and take care of things, but just getting them to come to us to get the question answered is important.
Along those lines, if, if someone has an issue now, or very recently, and they do what I would do, which is probably call Amanda or Marta, because that's who I know to call.
Yes.
And I would say, I'm having this problem, what would happen next? Would, would they refer me to your office?
Probably, yes.
As a matter of routine, there isn't, there isn't an in-house ombudsman for health insurance or anything like that. And so what they would tell me would be, uh, we have someone who handles that, here's their number, call them with your concerns.
Mm-hmm, and we have three school district experts in-house, uh, because we handle over a hundred and forty school districts in New York State and hundreds of these types of Medicare plans.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, they're very well-versed in Medicare and Ithaca and schools.
Okay.
So that one of them would be able to assist you with whatever question you had.
I, I know that information is out there.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that I received it, and, and now I'm wondering, to what extent, when you sent out your, your latest letter saying, if you've been having problems, let us know, we wanna work with you, we wanna know how, what the issues are, how many responses did you get to that?
Um, probably like a dozen and a half.
Really, that, that few, despite.
Yep, and they were all old issues, I don't even think we had one, maybe we had one new one that we hadn't known about previously, and it was something, she's like, ah, I wasn't gonna do anything, but I guess since I got this letter, so she wasn't really concerned about it, but thought, I'll give it a try.
Okay, so out of eight hundred and some people, seven hundred and some people that you sent this letter to, you got approximately twelve?
Well, probably twenty, let's say, a dozen and a half even.
Okay, let's say twenty, ap- approximately twenty unhappy people.
Well, just people that said, oh, I wanna see if my claim will be covered now, because for whatever reason, their claim was not covered, and they just wanted to see if something changed, and then that one new person wanted to see if there was anything they could do.
Okay, and your sense was that most of those were orthotic related?
Yes, so both of them were orthotic related, and they know, uh, from past years that they were gonna get reimbursed, so it's just a matter of getting all the paperwork, uh, in order so that they can get their reimbursement.
And there's currently, to your knowledge, one unhappy person whose issues have not been resolved to their satisfaction, is that?
Well, uh, one person that was new, that responded to the letter.
Okay.
Um, so not necessarily is that they were unhappy, but they just brought their issue up for the first time, whereas all the others that called based on the letter were repeats.
I've been. Okay.
That we had dealt with at one point or another over the years.
And they were all eventually satisfied, or only some of them were eventually satisfied?
Um, the orthotic ones would be reimbursed, the rest would not.
Okay, so there are, of those people, so here's, I, I'm trying to get a sense of, I have all this information, and I'm trying to funnel it down to, how many unhappy people are there out there? And is it?
Well, they may be unhappy, and this is what I mean, their unhappiness is because they believe
That's what I'm.
that it should have been covered, it would have been covered.
Or would have been covered under Exelis.
Right, and Christina is saying they investigate and they run, I, I like that because it helped clarify me, that you run a test claim with.
Right.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that contrary to people's beliefs, it would. and that contrary to people's beliefs, it would not have been covered on the other plan.
Yeah.
And we started doing that and getting a policy because I think when we told folks, no, unfortunately, they thought, well, you're just on the district side. You don't want me to get my money. And so we said, no, we need a paper trail because this isn't, you know, Christina Braga deciding, yeah, I don't think I wanna pay your claim.
Good.
There, we have a very clear paper trail with a policy and we send that along, so there's no question as to.
So is that the chart that we're missing, Christina? Is that the chart that we're missing? That over the years, there had been eighty disputed claims, forty of them were decided, um
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying is to to really make it clear, forty of them, it was decided that indeed a mistake had been made and they were reimbursed. Twenty of them, it was decided the person hadn't gone through the proper procedure of of getting pre-approval or whatever, and that was explained to the that's that's what would help me to understand this ground swell of what feels like a ground swell of unhappiness despite what seems to be some very clear data in favor of staying with Aetna.
Mm-hmm.
Or people like myself.
And and to piggyback on that, you know, from a financial standpoint, there's no financial benefit to denying them on the school district's point. Because if you tabulate the total cost that would have been paid out by this, it's not a lot of money, you know what I mean?
Right.
Right, orthotics claims, you probably paid out, you know, a hundred bucks for each person, you know, on our thoughts.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
But that data won't capture people that just give up, right?
Right.
And that's what the committee has said, like there's, and I, you know, I don't I don't really know how to reach.
Right. Well, I don't have to quantify those people if they're, yeah.
Yeah, start quantifying it, there's gonna be some percentage.
Right.
I uh I so we were sitting and I was like, how how did we actually get here? Like, how did we lose the ground swell of whether it's, you know, eight or nine active people on the committee or the hundred and eighty or two hundred and twenty people on the email chain that signed up?
Mm-hmm.
You know, to get, um but I, yeah.
I think Joe has a great point, that visual of this is the number of people, this is what was, you know, not rectified or addressed, but this was the process. And so you break it down, so it almost shows out of the number of issues. And everybody, everybody has an issue with
I think all the denials, yeah.
With denials or, you know, whatever the classifications are. And then it shows the true outcome and the percentage. And also, oh, it would have been denied under Blue Cross Blue Shield anyway. So it clarifies all of those misconceptions. I think that visual needs to show.
Cause there's the equivalency issue and the there's the happiness unhappiness with Aetna issue, they're somewhat different.
I think I think they I think Cathy's even said, and and I don't wanna speak for them, but essentially they they've said this is equivalent, right? They're not really quibbled about that.
Oh, okay.
The equivalence, how they're they're sort of shifting the language, it's not that this will be covered and that wouldn't, but that the process, they have to go through the hoops, they have to jump through the pre-authorization.
The that isn't equivalent or the that isn't satisfactory, okay.
It's not equivalent, because incorrect, you correct me if, because you're the expert, I'm like way down here from your knowledge. But it's different psychologically when you go to the doctor and Excels Blue Cross, there's no gatekeeping. And you get the procedure done and you get a bill a month later that is hard to understand. You're just happy that Blue Cross Blue Shield paid ninety percent of it. You're like, okay, I gotta pay, you know, a hundred, they paid eight hundred, I gotta pay a hundred and fifty. It's another thing to be in the doctor's office because of the two bureaucracies they're dealing with. You're sitting there and the secretary is saying, we don't have the authorization yet. And it's like, oh, I just have a day away, right?
Oh, that 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 is.
No, no, it's like, it just pissed me off at the very beginning. That's the psychological difference. I think that's how we got here because there are too many cases of people, for whatever reason, either the doctor's office forgot or didn't send the appropriate paperwork. And Aetna is much more vigilant on pre-authorization, so they're like
And that feels like a denial.
We're not okaying this, still get the proper paperwork.
Yeah.
Well, if I'm a day away from the surgery at the doctor's office and it hasn't been approved, now my anxiety goes skyrocketing.
Um but also, you know, it's not clear to me, you know, how many cases of that um there have been. And then also, is there a way to, you know, and Bob has said this in meetings, to try to address the service issues um that um seem to be uh plaguing some people um and causing anxiety. Also, it's very clear to me um from talking to people and getting emails and the survey that a lot of people, they hear about somebody else's problem and they sometimes they even misunderstand it a lot because the the person who had the problem misunderstood what they were told. Then it gets repeated and then we have people who have personally not had any problems, but they fear they were, will because other people have.
And and people that they trust, they have a great deal of respect for.
Right. Right, right.
I mean, that's that's what I'm weighing here. These are people I've worked with for years and and they have those respect for.
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's how I kind of, you know, waded into trouble
Yeah, nice.
by responding to somebody that I knew and respected and reached out with sympathy and it it got it got very difficult because the person had misunderstood what she'd been told. And then, and and understandable because, and that's one of the the human elements here that's really, you know, we have to acknowledge is that people are sick, people are in pain, people are struggling and it just amplifies the impact of a problem. Um and so, you know, this person thought that I was gonna solve it because I reached out with sympathy. Um and, you know, it, I couldn't, you know, um. So I'm I'm very wary now of uh how I communicate.
I've been I've been sympathetic.
I've been sympathetic, well, yeah, of of how I I communicate about these. And and that, you know, we um when we made this switch, well, particularly the one that was really, really difficult is when we made the decision to make those, to to take back choice of uh when we went to Hartford, we initially allowed people to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, but after very, very compelling numbers um about cost to the district and a lack of evidence that we had not fulfilled our obligation to provide equal or better coverage. You know, we voted to force these people to um to to go onto Hartford. Um and it was extremely difficult for me to face people that I have known and been friends with and worked with who were very, very upset um and to say, I can't give you what you want.
I and as I recall, the the cost differential just for the people who wanted to stay on
Blue Cross.
so Blue Cross was like in excess of, what, five million dollars?
No, it wasn't that much. It was about a mil-
It was over a million.
It was over a million.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, a a million of the district for the district.
For the district, not even counting there for the amity.
Or like, it was like sixty, sixty people left Hartford, yeah.
About sixty, yeah.
So so if we go back to the to the question of, in the last five years, people who have reached your office with denials or disputes, um i- is that data available?
So it probably would be, but the, I think the issue at hand really probably should go back to the Aetna
Yeah.
which started in January of twenty-one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we've only been on it a year and
Right.
uh you know, ten months, yeah.
Do you have a much shorter?
Yes.
I haven't been old until very recently.
So yes, we can go back through, so we have some data already from Aetna talking about of the denials, how many were overturned and how or how many did appeals. We do have some of that data available. We just wouldn't have, I just don't have the data available as like the people that have called.
Right.
How did that turn out for them, basically?
Okay. Now, were you also the representative when we did the Hartford? So do we have any information on how Aetna is stacking up against the Hartford? Because we did, we we reached, we had that huge resistance to any kind of change. And we dealt with it at the time by saying, okay, if you wanna keep Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can do that. And then I mean, most people, the vast majority of people did go over to the Hartford voluntarily, but the people who chose to stay on Blue Cross Blue Shield were just re- really af- afraid, anxious
Yeah.
about change and they were very, very resistant, very vocal. But I don't, at the point of change, but I don't recall a flurry of complaints, a a large flurry of complaints.
There was a very large flurry, right after that group went over, we were communicating.
Yeah, we had. That 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 the the transition was rough, I remember that.
Yeah.
Right.
We had more Hartford called when those sixty people went over than all of your other folks combined.
So it's just, I it might be helpful to show that this has worked much better than Hartford did for the overall constituency. That might be some some valuable, a a valuable comparative point like where you're showing Excels um the nu- the number of denials for Excels and then what what we had, what we as a district had for the Hartford versus what we've had for Aetna.
I'm not sure how much data as far as denials would be available with Hartford because we'd have to get to Medicare first and I don't know how willing Medicare would be to release any data to us.
Yeah.
But I will say, when we presented to the committee, we started educating, everything was compared to Hartford because that's what people were used to at that time, right? So we said, okay, we heard you with this, here's how we addressed it. In any area we could, we threw in every enhancement. And it still made financial sense and so um that's actually what we did at the time. So now what we're left with is the issues are the process. So we're kind of, we're we're having less complaints about the Aetna. It seems bigger, I feel, probably because of the connectivity with the watchdog that we never had during Hartford. People weren't on a website every day, keeping each other posted with what was going on with Hartford. Now during COVID, we have this website and I feel like that is when things really started to blow up. Um we hear a new rumor pretty regularly about my friend can't get there, this or that. And of course, we can't disclose it all and all that. So it's it's been, it's been tough, but we're, you know, just addressing the issues as they come. I just trying to do the best we can.
There's a question, so um good, Dr. Well, maybe somebody knows. Uh so when we have talked about the issue of going back to offering choice that people will want to, who who understand how much more it would cost them uh to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield and, you know, what wouldn't, wouldn't be covered uh if we gave them choice. Um I know, you know, Christina has said she was very concerned about the cost of that. But also, uh Dr. Brown suggested there may be some legalities that would bar us from doing that because essentially we would be spending district money basically based on because people say this is what we want. And um so do we have any update on that?
Yeah. It would be almost impossible to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. That that prob-
Being as a choice, that's.
Yeah, that probably is a legal impossibility. Um allowing people to go back to a Medicare supplemental plan
Uh-huh.
is a possibility, it is not something that we're acting for. But it's a legal possibility to allow for that.
To uh supplement.
Other sort of mechanisms that would have to take place, um.
But it it's a process and it's it would take at least a year, if I remember correctly.
Uh I'm, one avenue uh is that we wouldn't the more people we offer choice to, the more more legally problematic it becomes. But if there are certain people that have, that want to file a notice of claim, for example, we could settle those notices and claims with a lot of that.
Gotcha.
But the more people do that, it becomes more legally difficult to justify as settlement of particular claims.
Mm-hmm.
And it begins to look more like you know, we're doing this whole thing. So there's some nuances, it's not a, it's not a dead legal issue, but.
And going back to the Medicare Supplement Plan would be accepting some of those plan uh categories that we had upgraded by going to Aetna. So we'd almost be taking a step back.
And they would be losing options.
And they would be paying more for it on top of it.
Coverage and more for it.
So I, we could look at it, but it doesn't seem like it would actually address really the concerns that it hurts.
And what I'm hearing is the the concern that's that's really out there is the process concern. Because the process concern is the denial, is is feeling like the lack of coverage.
And the pre-authorization denials and then the medical necessity reviews, right?
Which those are the type.
You might get, you might start doing your PT, thinking everything's okay. And then Aetna does a medical review and it's like, hey, you can do this at home, right? And then you get essentially the denial. Is there anything um you know, is it like education of folks, like, you know, if you're gonna do PT, here are five things you should remember?
Well, it's tough because PT, like I said, doesn't even have a prior off.
Yeah.
So that's what's
But it adds a review, right?
Yep, so yeah, so with Excels or Aetna, you know, you go five times and then all of a sudden, your sixth time, you get a bill. And you go, hey, wait a minute, what's going on?
So they pay in the first few times because
Yep, they get freebies. And then after a set amount of time, a set amount of visits is when either carrier will do their review. So, I mean, you certainly could just do a general, very general education. If you're going to something like PT, just, you know, be aware that you have to have a medical reason. Um I will say, as far as the prior off goes, doctors are getting better. It seems like they're getting a little bit more unburied when it comes to the paperwork. Uh so we're seeing the prior authorization become a little bit more smooth. But if there's ever an emergency, so someone's in the emergency room and that's a service that needs a prior off, that goes out the window, forget about it. We've had a person who needed an instant like MRI. They they weren't gonna wait, obviously, the seventy-two hours. They went right to the ER, got what they needed, and they were fine.
So emergency room always trumps whatever.
Yes, if there's an emergency, go and get your service and you won't have to worry about it. If you can wait for the service, there's the prior off process.
So I think there are some things that absolutely we um, you know, we could educate people about. Um but one of the things that that, you know, we're gonna need to educate people about is that, you know, a group is calling for everybody to go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield. This is what it will cost you if that happens, this is what it will mean if that happens.
I think we can, as far as going back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we can take that off the table, it's it's a legal impossibility.
You mean as a choice?
As a choice.
Or you mean, I mean, we could as a, we could blanket go back to.
Like, I'm I've posited that question, Kate, and I said, well, could the board just choose to do it?
Really?
And what, you know, it's essentially like, how can we, how can we justify the expenditure of taxpayer money for a product that is is demonstrable, you have fear it's not as equivalent. They got boosts when we went to Hartford and they've gotten boosts, you know, not major boosts, but, right?
Here in AIDS.
And it's much more expensive. So um this apparently, I didn't do the research, Kate did, uh some control reports and would, in her mind, essentially prohibited that from happening.
So, all right, well, well, given that, um you know, so we have a a group of people coming to make a presentation to us, including somebody who's flying from
Florida, I think.
Florida or Arizona, I don't know. Um and they are going to be trying to convince us to go back, to put everybody back on Excels Blue Cross Blue Shield. So at what point do we share? So at what point do we share the fact that our legal counsel is telling us that, um, that would not be something that we can do? So are we?
But I think we need to have Kate here to say that because.
Well, or do we tell them before? That's like a, like a presentation, maybe?
We'll reach out to Carl, had, um, yeah.
And Sandy, who is.
It's Sandy. She's coming and.
Great, we're smiling.
Yeah, Sandy, uh, to that particular person's case, she, she did have.
Which I think.
Sandy, sure.
She had, she had legitimate customer service issues. There's no question about that. Yes, so she definitely had customer service issues.
She had a legitimate.
Right, question.
With.
With, with Aetna, with that, right.
Yes, yup. We have, um, the main person at Aetna, the two main people that were involved in her whole case are no longer with Aetna. Let's just say that. Um, so, but to my knowledge, she has not been denied any service, unless she just hasn't told.
But, well, they weren't covering the PT that she believes that, that her husband is entitled to.
It was, yeah, so there's no plan of action sent in. So they wanted visits with no plan.
Right, okay. So the doctor did.
The new, it was the new billing person.
The new, oh, and then?
Yeah, so you have to submit a plan of care and the number of visits you want.
Right. So has that been resolved?
To my knowledge, which is she has not reached that out.
Oh. Okay, all right.
Yeah, cause that's the other issue is someone who feels they were harmed in the past. Luckily, we're only talking about the last year and a half.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have, have they been made whole in some way, I suppose, are there lingering cases like that? Well, I'm, I'm very eager to hear what, what the watchdog group has to say. And I think rather than us conveying that Kate has said to Bob, I, I think we should let them know.
I just, right, I, I just, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like that it's
Yeah.
that they deserve to know that, you know, since the last time we had a meeting or communicated with them, that, um, you know, what they are proposing appears not to be possible.
You don't wanna waste their time with that, I suppose.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're leading to a certain conclusion, we don't.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we know they're leading back to that.
Well, that's what they said the last meeting.
Okay, then I think, I think we need to have Kate here to say that to them.
Yeah.
And I'm enough of a skeptic that I can honestly tell you that if Bob told me in a meeting like that that Kate said it, I would, I would wanna hear it from Kate.
Um, we have Kate, um, cause I think the premise is to let them know before they spend time and effort coming from various places in the country.
In advance.
Right.
Yeah.
And they need to tailor their presentation too. Knowing it's not possible, what is, what do you want to share?
Right.
Yes, what she wants.
So what they might wanna say.
They might wanna share and they might also want, uh, perhaps to talk about shifting to a, a supplemental instead of a mandatory.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah, they might, they might take, uh, the fight at that end.
Mm-hmm.
But if they know that our legal counsel is at the point where she's not going to endorse us going back to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That does take a major piece of it, I think.
Yeah. So I think, I think I can get, I'll get Kate to do a quick statement to that fact and then share it with the folks in the committee.
Yes. He's close.
And then, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
That was the method, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got two minutes to go.
So with your last two minutes, are there any other questions that I can answer for you?
Would you put your mother on this plan?
My mom's on it. Oh, and she.
Sure.
I'm on it.
Well, I'm on it.
My, you're right, my sister's on it, my husband, my brother, my sister and all, all about it.
Have your sister's on it.
And honestly, I said, do you, you know, we work with so many schools that are on these plans and people love it.
No, I haven't, I still remember.
And for, of course, everyone's always nervous, change is nerve wracking. I get that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But once they get on it and use it a couple of times and realize, oh, okay, this thing works, then usually it's.
And this is like my sister, I was talking to her the other day and I just said, you know, by the way, do you have any problems too, right? And she said, no. She said, but I was at a brunch with, you know, a bunch of my former colleagues and one of them was really like on the warpath about this and, you know, about this plan. And it made my sister think, oh, God, you know, am I gonna have problems down the road? I just haven't yet. And, uh, I shared some information with her and she's like, oh, okay.
Well, the important thing to know is no matter what carrier, nothing's ever gonna be perfect. That's actually why I have a job, actually, because carriers are never perfect.
Right.
But that's okay. Have them call us. We will get to the bottom of it. And, you know, that's the best advice I've given. We need more call center cards to hand out to people when you hear a complaint? Hand them a little business card, please. Call ENV, email, call, whatever, please. That's, that's the best because it's not only can we help them, but then it gets to me and then I can educate and talk with you folks on, okay, how do we help in the big picture? So it's just good all around.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. I'll see you next Tuesday.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Be safe.
Really? I, I haven't been to one of these, so.
Be safe on your journey.
Yes, it's been so long. Well, I'm sorry if you have to want me to bring the staff or am I just an observer next week?
I would, I would.
Oh, you prepared to join me in the last.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They've already heard my spiel. They already what I have to say.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Um, okay, if there's anything else you, you need, we're coming, but now.
I'd be better.
I know, it really helps.
I'm not gonna get this kind of coverage when I retire. I'm on Cornell's website. It's like, oh, I'm gonna pay out pocket.
Oh, no.
You should have gone with the full stimulus groups if it was a city school.
Calling you, what, calling you.
No, you should have gone to Cornell.
I'm, I'm starting to rethink. It's, and like.
Now to say, does Aetna have its own or?
They're hiring, it's not to me.
He has his own.
And, and I don't think it's as good. I don't know.
It's so, I remember when Sam started to work for Cornell and he had been on, you know, my side of this school district every one time.
Charles, it's, it's, I would say.
And, you know, he got out of, like, you're welcome, you know, ten years, right? And so then he goes to, he goes to, and I'm like, yeah.
Have a great day, everybody. Thank you so much.
The college.
And so I'm looking at that, what they're offering. And the thing is, they were offered different plans, which was like, you know, the menu that, that is open.
Very.
There's, there's two different ones and I think I've already reached out, um, to the Cornell Plan for Healthy Living administered by Aetna. And we've paid very little out of pocket and I've got a personal health account, but I look at what they've got for retirees is an eight and twenty, which are not for Aetna,
Oh.
which is not what I want. And my uncle, who recently passed, passed weeks, two years ago, he's eighty-eight, had Medicare and the, the, uh, uh, AARP supplement, United Healthcare. And he was, he was in the hospital when he passed for a solid week with all kinds of invasive procedures, not a single penny.
But do you know what he pays in the cost?
Well, I don't. It, it's, it's the AARP one. It's, it's an AARP supplemental and I'm, I'm gonna actually look into it and.
Uh-huh. Well, that's the thing, also when, when, so student went on Medicare when he turned sixty-five, but yes, the meeting's over.
Right. Should we close on the adjournment?
No. No. I move that we adjourn.
Okay.